Welcome to the Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting. Today is Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. The time is 2:07 PM and we are in the Building and Safety Boardroom at 201 North Figueroa Street, ninth floor, Los Angeles, California. I am President Thyrus Mason and I'll be chairing this meeting. The following commissioners are present. Commissioners Melendez and Nash. I'm going to go over some housekeeping items before we get started. This meeting is being recorded, therefore we ask that when addressing the commission, you speak close to the microphone and only one person at a time. Please state your name each time you speak. This meeting is being livestreamed. Individuals who wish to watch and listen to this meeting may do so by visiting cannabis.lacity.gov. Please be advised that the city has discontinued the use of council phone effective immediately. Beginning today, the only way to access the commission meetings will be in person or through the department's website. Also, please be aware that beginning with the commission meeting on May 15th, 2025, anyone wishing to provide testimony to this commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission will have to appear in person. This includes public comment and specific cases. We will be following the agenda order for the most part. Agendas are located by the tape, on the table by the intern's door along with speaker cards. Individuals who are physically here and wish to address this commission must fill out a speaker's card and specify which item or items you are going to speak on. Individuals can provide public comment or comments about a specific agenda item in person or virtually via the Zoom link provided on the agenda. If you are present at the meeting, please fill out a speaker card and turn it into Irene or Josie. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and clearly state your name. If you are in the Zoom call, when the item you wish to speak on is called, press star nine to get on the speaking queue. The commission executive assistant will call out each speaker by the last four digits of their phone number to identify the caller. The caller will be prompted to unmute themselves by dialing star six. Again, please note that effective May 15th, 2025, public comment via Zoom phone will no longer be available. Those individuals wishing to address this commission will have to appear in person. We will consider general public comment and single or multiple agenda items together. Therefore, speakers will have one minute for general public comment and one minute per item, with a maximum of two minutes for multiple items. In total, an individual shall be limited to three minutes of public comment per meeting. Representatives from neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution or a community impact statement with the city clerk which relates to any item on the agenda will be given time to speak during the agenda item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. We ask that speakers state whether they are providing general public comment and/or which other item or items they are speaking on before they begin to comment so that staff can appropriately time them. If the speaker does not specify which items they are speaking on, one minute will be provided. PowerPoint presentations presented to this commission today, whether it's by the department or applicants, will be posted online and made available to the public via DCR's website within two business days. For those attending the in-person meeting, please be aware that after 6 o'clock PM, if you leave the ninth floor in which to return, you will need to check in with security on the first floor to re-enter and access the elevators to the ninth floor. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on vibrate so as not to disturb the proceedings. Please be respectful. Disruptions will not be tolerated. If you disrupt the proceedings, you will receive two warnings. If you continue the disruptive behavior, you will be asked to leave the meeting. We're now on item one, public comment. General public comment and single or multiple agenda item comments is now open. Speakers can address the commission on non-agenda related items that are within the jurisdiction of the commission or provide public comment for items in today's agenda. If you are listening on the live stream and have called to provide public comment via Zoom, please mute the live stream audio before you begin speaking to eliminate feedback. We will alternate between calling up individuals here at the meeting and those on the call. Please bear with us. The first comment is from Luis Rivera.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, please state your name and which items you're speaking on.
Thank you. Luis Rivera, uh, general comment. Hello, my name is Luis Rivera. I'm with Social Equity LA, a nonprofit organization that supports minority owners and licensees here in Los Angeles. I'm also a social equity applicant myself and license holder. I'm just here to thank you guys first and foremost for your service and the department for what we've done over the last few years. Um, I know it hasn't been the best program. Um, and right now it, the times are tough, tougher than they ever been. Uh, the economy is down and I ask that you guys, uh, just reconsider any sort of fee increases, anything that will put an additional burden on small business owners. Um, and at the very least, provide fee waivers or direct grants to the, uh, social equity licenses. Also, uh, if you can lower taxes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vizo, is there anyone in the queue?
There are no raised hands, but I will make an announcement. If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. Caller with phone number ending in 4064, please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hi, uh, my name is John. I'm calling on item number eight today.
Can you hold for one second, please? We can't hear you.
Sure.
Okay, please state your name and which items you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is John. I'm calling on item number eight.
Do you wish to speak now or when the item's called?
Uh, I can speak now.
Okay, you have one minute.
Uh, I just want to say, while I'm not against cannabis, uh, I am a believer that if there's rules and regulations enacted that they need to be followed and when broken, penalties need to be enforced. If we continue to allow bad actors second, third, fourth chances, why should any other operator run tight ship, especially since doing so is generally to their financial detriment? Uh, this business seems to have multiple violations with hosting concerts, parties, all things that, that were on their social media, which has now, I think, been deleted, making it harder to prove, but there is plenty of proof out there. Uh, on top of that, they're within 700 feet of a school, God's Hand Academy on 727 Irolo Street. And they're also, they're delinquent on their city taxes. Uh, to renew an application, uh, they're, they're supposed to be in good standing with all of their city taxes and this business is not in good standing. So I just don't understand why we would continue to allow people to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any more speaker cards. Are there any more callers in the queue?
There are no raised hands. I will make another announcement. If anyone in the virtual meeting would like to provide public comment, please dial star nine. There are no raised hands.
Okay, we can go ahead and close public comment, general public comment and single or multiple agenda items at this time. Moving on to item two. This is a reminder that any representatives of neighborhood councils who have filed a resolution or a community impact statement with the city clerk which relates to any agenda item will be given time to speak during the item itself. Please provide a copy of the filed statement or resolution to the commission executive assistant. Any neighborhood council representative speaking on behalf of their neighborhood council must provide a letter on their letterhead stating the neighborhood council's position on the matter. Absent any neighborhood council documentation, comments may still be provided during the public comment period. Item three is commission business. Approval of proposed amendments to the Cannabis Regulation Commission rules and operating procedures. Does the department or city attorney have a summary of the proposed changes?
Uh, yes, this is City Attorney Allison Toll. I do, I can summarize the changes pretty quickly. Uh, you should also see a redlined copy, uh, as an attachment to your agenda. There have been two changes that are made to section 4.4. 4.4B is now amended to read as follows. Uh, elected office, neighborhood council, and other public entity presentations. An authorized representative of an elected office or other public entity may present the formal position of their office on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the commission. An authorized representative of a neighborhood council may present the formal position of his or her neighborhood council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the commission pursuant to the, uh, to requirements set forth in the Los Angeles Administrative Code. Um, so this clarifies that in addition to elected office and neighborhood councils, uh, other public agencies may also provide presentation on items on the agenda. Um, and also specifies that these, uh, presentations must be within the jurisdiction of the commission. Uh, the next update is to 4.4C. Uh, it now reads department and legislative updates. So reports from the department and its subdivisions will now report on both the department and any legislative updates. And those are the changes.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions regarding the proposed revisions or any comments? I'm just gonna say, while he's getting prepared, thank you for expanding the presenter list to also include other per, public entity presentations and also for including legislative updates in the department's reports. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other commissioners with comments, questions? Do I have a motion on this item? Hearing no comments.
This is Vice President Nash. I move to adopt the Cannabis Regulation Commission rules and operating procedures as revised and presented to us today.
Mr. Melendez, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizo. Please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioners, we do have an advanced calendar with our future meeting dates. Please take a look and advise if there are any planned absences from any other commissioners.
This is Commissioner Melendez, uh, for 17, 2025, I will not be present.
Okay.
President Mason, um, I believe, Commissioner Farmby will not be present at that meeting.
As well, that's what's noted on the advanced calendar. So given that we won't have forum and there will be no meeting on April 17th, so we'll have to figure out a date for a special meeting? No? Yes?
Basically, an assistant executive director, uh, we do not currently have any cases set for April 17th.
Okay.
Um, however, we did have a number of the report backs the commission had requested that we were going to bring forward on the 17th. Um, if you would like, we could reach out to commissioners to see if they have availability to do a special meeting on the 24th or another date, or we could hold those report backs over to the second meeting in May.
How many cases are scheduled for the second meeting in May? That's the 17th.
We do not have. Currently, we are not scheduling any new cases for the second meeting of the month to ensure that we have the ability to carry over cases or do presentations and report backs to address the commission's requests. So zero cases are scheduled for May 15th at this time.
Okay, I know, what is hap, how many cases are scheduled for May 1st?
We have six on the agenda. One was a continuation and then we have five that were scheduled for their initial public hearing.
Okay. I just know that the 17th of this month was a heavy lift. I'm concerned about that load on the 15th.
Um, I would be more than happy to schedule some of those report backs for May 1st, given the fact we do not have a heavy caseload, um, if that is your preference.
Yes, yes, let's balance it out a little bit.
Which report backs would you like? I believe there were taxes. Um, there was a report back on the special event in consumption lounges. Um, we're gonna be transmitting a report. I believe we were going to talk about the mayor's proposed budget at the May 15th meeting. Um, so we can do taxes ahead of the budget discussion on the first, if you'd like.
I know that on the 15th, we were also gonna talk about, um, there were gonna be report backs on proposed policy. I think that there's some symmetry there with taxes and proposed policy. So maybe we do taxes on the 15th and just leave the mayor's budget on the first.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Looking at the advanced calendar, there, the taxes, the DCR response to the state auditor report about the LJAG grant, the report on the special events and permits, which is gonna be transmitted, um, I believe next week. And I believe LAPD was going to do their quarterly presentation on the 14th as well.
Okay.
I can work with Rocky and the LAPD team to see if we can get them rescheduled for, uh, May 15th.
Okay. The report back on special events, if we could leave that earlier in the month? Because I know that's one Commissioner Melendez has been waiting for for quite some time.
We will have that on the first as well.
Okay.
So budget and, um, special events on May 1st, the other stuff will carry over to the 15th.
Sounds good. Commissioners, any, any comments, thoughts?
Perfect.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other planned absences, commissioners? Okay, then we are moving on to the approval of minutes. We were sent the revised minutes of February 20th, 25 for review. Commissioners, the revisions to these minutes are to item 10, beginning on page 10, to include the findings for the denial of the item. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
This is Vice President Nash. I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 20th, 2025.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Um, do we wanna correct that motion?
Was it the February ones?
It's February, you said March.
I stand corrected. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 20th, 2024.
Uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Nash, uh, 2025, not 2024. Do you wish to amend further?
It says 2024 on it.
On the agenda or on the?
On the minutes.
On the actual minutes? So on the agenda, it's listed.
These are the revised ones, correct?
2025, correct, yes.
Yeah, mine says 2024.
It should be 2025.
The first page says 2024.
Okay, so we will.
Remaining pages read 2025.
Yeah.
Assistant Executive Director Jason Colleen, I would like to correct for the record that the date should reflect 2025, not 2024. Um, I apologize for that oversight.
Then, uh, this is Vice President Nash. I'll restate the motion uh, to approve the meeting minutes for Thursday, February 20, 2024, as, uh, verbally amended here.
This is Commissioner, right?
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let's, uh, this is City Attorney Allison Toll. So, uh, as part of the motion, Commissioner Nash, if you would indicate that they are the minutes for February 20th, 2025, as corrected on the record. Um, since we have established here that although it says 24 on the actual minutes, it is for this year, 2025.
Certainly, this is Vice President.
Thank you.
I move to, uh, approve the meeting minutes of February 20, 2025, which were verbally, um, amended or corrected to indicate that it's, uh, February 20, 2025 and not 2024 as reflected on the document in front of me.
This is Commissioner Melendez. I second the correction by Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, commissioners. Mr. Vizo, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We were also sent the minutes of March 6, 2025 for review. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Vice President Nash. I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 20, 2025.
Commissioner Melendez, if the date is correct, I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Vizo, please call the roll as the date is correct.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
President, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to future agenda requests, commissioners, are there any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, we're moving on to item four, the report from the executive director. Assistant Director Colleen, is there a report?
There is not a report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I'm taking item nine out of order. Item nine is DCR Core Record Number 101810. The applicant is Kinder Understanding Sensitive Healing, also known as Kush Collective. The recommendation is to receive and file and no action is necessary. Therefore, the item is received and filed. Taking item 11 out of order, DCR Core Record Number 100008. The applicant is Holistic Alternative Inc., number 57 slash D. The recommendation is to receive and file and no action is necessary. Therefore, the item is received and filed. Taking item 13 out of order, DCR Core Record Number 310175. The applicant is the 18629 LLC. The department's recommendation is to continue this matter to the meeting of May 1st, 2025. May I have a motion, please?
This is Commissioner Melendez. With DCR Core Number Record Number 310175, uh, I make the motion to continue this to May 1st, 2025.
This is President Mason. I second. Mr. Vizo, please call the roll.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I am taking item 14 out of order. This is DCR Core Record Number 310150. The applicant is Pine and Proper LLC. The department's recommendation is to continue the matter to the commission meeting of May 1st, 2025. May I please have a motion?
Regarding item number 14, DCR Core Record Number 310150, the applicant Pine and Proper LLC for the business located at 615 East 61st Street, Suite 501. I move to continue the hearing on this, um, application to May 1st, 2025.
This is Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you. Mr. Vizo, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We are now back to the regular agenda order. Item number five is DCR Core Record Number 101771. The applicant is V Farm 1509 Incorporated to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at 411 East Rose Avenue. Mr. Vizo, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we did not receive the community impact statement.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will hear from department staff.
Good afternoon, this is licensing analyst Megan Blome. I will present item number five for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number 101771 is associated with the V Farm 1509, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type 10 retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at 411 East Rose Avenue in the Venice Community Plan Area within Council District 11. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of March 19th, 2019. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section 10406. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license number C12 dash 0000215 dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through July 23rd of 2025. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section 10420 for the social equity program. On or about November 26th, 2024, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and cannabis regulation commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within 700 feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on December 19th, 2024. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. A notice to correct was issued and the NTC has been closed out. A representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide more detail should the commission have any questions. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class 1 and Class 32 categorical exemption pursuant to SEQUA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section 10404. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes licensing's presentation for this item.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions for licensing?
This is Vice President Dash. Um, I noticed in the report that there is a highlighted section about the fact that this applicant, um, let's see, is delinquent on paying their business taxes to the Office of Finance. Is that in any way, shape, form, reason for denying the license?
Um, it could be. It is definitely a violation of the rules and regulations. Um, however, and it's also a reason to deny a renewal application. We were asked by the mayor's office to provide the mayor and city council the opportunity to address the tax delinquencies on a global level. Um, so DCR has not used that as a reason to deny any application that has been before or come before this body at this time. Um, the, the code requires absolute, um, compliance to be in good standing so that you can't be delinquent on any city fee, city tax, or deferred fee. And currently, there are over 700 businesses that have some form of tax delinquency currently. Um, and the code doesn't differentiate between somebody who owes $10 million, somebody who owes $100,000, or somebody who, um, didn't pay a late fee and owes $35. So, um, we have been asked to give those policymakers that opportunity to consider um, an amendment to good standing in what is considered to be in good standing and that will report most likely be heard in May or June of this year.
This is Vice President Nash. Essentially then, what the commission is being asked to do is to ignore that rule temporarily.
Yes, and the, the department has been instructed not to issue notices of violation for tax compliance, even though it is a violation of the rules and regs and we could set a business for it to allow policymakers the opportunity to have input on that policy discussion. So the department is not, um, recommending denial for anybody related to taxes. We have not denied a renewal application due to tax non-compliance. We have not issued a notice of violation for a violation of the rules and regulations or the municipal code for that reason either.
When is the deadline for the department to take action on this application?
The business has an active state provision. The business has an active state provisional license that was valid through July twenty third of two thousand twenty five. So realistically, the last date for us to be able to get it to a public hearing and then you know, if the Commission were to approve it would be our June fifth hearing.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Licensing? Then I will go ahead and welcome Compliance and Enforcement to the podium.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Senior PS, Senior Management Analyst Christina Campos with the summary for four one one East Rose Avenue. We conducted a compliance inspection on October twenty first, two thousand twenty four and issued a notice to correct on November twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four. During our inspection, we found a total of five deficiencies for this location ranging from minor to moderate deficiencies. When being, the compliance inspection identified a lack of required cameras on the exterior portion. The written security plans were not provided upon request. The no loitering, public drinking, or public smoking sign was not posted. And there was a discrepancy with an inventory. And the age of verification device was not being utilized. Since the issuance of the notice to correct, they have made corrections for all five deficiencies. Any questions for this location?
This is Commissioner Melendez. So they've made corrections and so the the Office of, so you guys are okay with all that?
Yeah, as far as compliance is concerned, they have made the corrections for the deficiencies that we were re-identified.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vizel, we don't have a speaker card for the applicant. Is someone on the Zoom call?
There are no raised hands. I will make an announcement. If the applicant's representative is on the virtual call, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Caller with phone number ending in two nine two zero, please state your name and your relationship to the applicant. You have ten minutes to address the Commission.
Hello, this is Anne Lawrence. I'm the CEO of V Farm fifteen oh nine.
You have ten minutes.
I was just going to say, wanted to provide the information on the corrections and answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Hi, this is President Mason. So just for clarification, you do not have a presentation at this time. You're just here for Q and A and clarification.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner? Vice President Nash? Okay, we have no questions for you. Thank you for calling in. We are on to deliberations.
This is Commissioner Melendez. It says here that they've had a temporary since two thousand nineteen. So they've been in good standings for a while. And then you know, they pretty much corrected their, all their NTCs. So obviously, they're on it. I guess the only question coming into play would be the money owed for the taxes. And we have to figure out if we're okay with moving on and not granting them a permit based on the fact that there's money owed to the city.
And this is Vice President Nash. I agree with your analysis. I would suggest continuing it to the June fifth meeting. I personally can't ignore the fact that they're delinquent and the fact that that's an obligation. And that would give somebody else above me the ability to address that issue so that it's applied consistently.
You both raised great points. This is President Mason. To Assistant Director Colleen's point that was raised earlier, I am aware that the Mayor's Office and deputy mayors and city council are working on ways to approach this issue without compromising the industry overall. So I'm considering that. And all that's been said here today, I would be in favor of a continuance to June fifth.
I am in concurrence with both of you.
All right, then. Do I have a motion? I mean, are we finished with deliberating?
I'm good.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
This is Vice President Nash. Regarding DCR Core Record Number one zero one seven seven one. The applicant is V Farm one five zero nine Inc. for the business located at four one one East Rose Avenue. I move to consider, continue the consideration of this matter to the meeting on June fifth, two thousand twenty five.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you. Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item six is DCR Core Record Number one zero one seven five nine. The applicant is West Valley Patients Center Incorporated, a California corporation to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at two three zero four three to two three zero four five West Ventura Boulevard. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have any speaker cards nor raised hands.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will hear from department staff.
This is Licensing Analyst Megan Blom. I will present item number six for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number one zero one seven five nine is associated with West Valley Patients Center Inc., a California corporation. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. Business is located at two three zero four three to two three zero four five West Ventura Boulevard in the Canoga Park, Winnetka, Woodland Hills. West Hills Community Plan Area within Council District Three. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section one oh four oh six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, number C twelve dash zero 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 six four dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June twelfth of two thousand twenty five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one oh four twenty for the social equity program. On or about November twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty four. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. The oral and written comments provided by the public were supportive of the business. Community members and representatives expressed their appreciation for the knowledgeable staff, cleanliness, and safe environment. A notice to correct was issued, and the NTC and all deficiencies were addressed and corrected. A representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide more detail should the Commission have any questions. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty Two categorical exemption pursuant to SECA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the Commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one oh four oh four. Therefore, DCR recommends the Commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes Licensing's presentation for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom. Commissioners, are there any questions for Licensing? Okay, hearing none, we'll welcome Compliance and Enforcement to the podium.
Good afternoon. Senior Management Analyst Christina Campos providing a summary for two three zero four three West Ventura Boulevard. On December eleventh, two thousand twenty four, Compliance prevented, conducted an inspection. And we issued a notice to correct on January twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five. We identified a total of five deficiencies. The first deficiency is a use of DBA, which is a minor deficiency. The identification of employees, the badges did not include the DCR Core Record Number. It was a minor. The camera placements on the business premises diagram did not correspond to the camera placement at the location, which is a moderate deficiency. And the video surveillance system was not equipped with a failure notification, a moderate deficiency. And there were no procedures in place to notify DCR in writing irregularities and criminal activity, which is another moderate deficiency. All five deficiencies have been corrected and were submitted to the analyst. Any questions for this location?
So this is Commissioner Melissa. Compliance is has been satisfied with the, with all the ENTCs and everything to to date. We're all good?
Yes, we're all good. Everything was submitted. The modifications were submitted to Licensing. So as far as compliance is concerned, they met all the corrections.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nash, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're on to deliberations, if any. The applicant? I am so sorry. You are so right. We will allow the applicant's presentation. I don't have a speaker card. Is there someone on Zoom?
There are no raised hands. If the applicant's representative is in the virtual meeting, please dial star nine to raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay, then we are now on to deliberations.
This is Commissioner Melendez to echo Commissioner Farm V's message to everybody is we do like to make sure that there's somebody for us to speak to or see here at the Commission meetings for the importance of their permitting process. With that being said, I see that they've had a a temp issued on the twenty twentieth, which is, you know, it's been a while. They've been diligent about getting, taking care of their deficiencies, their notice to corrects. Once again, we come back down to the issue of taxes. And so if we're going to start continuing them all based on the taxes, then we're going to basically by continue most of the things in front of us today. So we have to we have to figure out what we're going to do about that. The Commission.
This is Vice President Nash. I agree.
This is President Mason. No arguments from me. I'm going to close this portion for a moment and reopen the department's report to ask when their state, what would be the latest date. This could be agendaized so that they could still honor their state licensing requirements.
Licensing Analyst Megan Blom here. Given the expiration of their state provisional of June twelfth of this year, the department would recommend continuing it to May first of this year to allow for time.
Thank you so much. Closing department recommendation and returning to deliberations at this time. Commissioners?
Are we ready for a motion?
We are ready for a motion.
This is Vice President Nash. Regarding item number six, DCR Core Record Number one zero one seven five nine for the business located at two three zero four three hyphen two three zero four five West Ventura Boulevard. I move to continue the matter to the meeting of May first, two thousand twenty five.
This is Commissioner Melendez. I second that motion.
Thank you. Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. It's the gender L, I'm sorry. Item number seven is DCR Core Record Number three one zero two four five. The applicant is Gold Star Industries LLC to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight nine one two to eight nine one four North Reseda Boulevard. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raise hand.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from department staff.
This is Licensing Analyst Megan Blom. I will present item number seven for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number three one zero two four five is associated with Gold Star Industries LLC. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eighty nine twelve North Reseda Boulevard in the Northridge Community Plan Area within Council District twelve. The applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section one oh four oh six, but is currently nonoperational. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, number C ten dash zero 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 one three five eight dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one oh four twenty for the social equity program. To comply with the equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote into the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. On or about December twentieth, two thousand twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on January seventeenth, two thousand twenty five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a Class One and Class Thirty Two categorical exemption pursuant to SECA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the Commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one oh four oh four. Therefore, DCR recommends the Commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Licensing? Hearing none, I'll welcome Compliance and Enforcement to the podium. Nothing? Okay. Then we're moving on to the applicant's presentation, if there is one. And there is. Norrick, I can't, I'm not, last name starts with a B.
Valagiozian.
I'll get it right one day.
That's all right. I need to change it probably. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Norrick Valagiozian. I'm the attorney, compliance attorney for the applicant. Wanted to be here to be able to answer any of your questions. Other than the fact that I'm sure you've heard that the applicant is not yet operational. It's, we're still essentially the applicant was waiting for them to get their annual to be able to do some fundraising for them to be able to open up. Times are tough. It's a social equity applicant. They've been around for a couple of years now, just kind of existing, paying rent and all that. But now that this is finalized, we're hoping we'll be able to get get started on open, you know, building out and opening, opening doors, opening the doors and moving forward with that process. Other than that, not much really to say. Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate the opportunity. Like to answer any questions you guys have.
Okay, thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions?
This is Vice President Nash. Assuming the license is approved, approximately, what's the timeline for getting the business operating?
If the license is approved, given the fact that we already have a state license as well, so as soon as physically we're able to build out or technically we'll be able to open the doors, uh, I think it will require DCR inspection, just to look it up, and we'll schedule that. Three to four months maybe for to do the build out, make sure all the inspections and everything are are completed. That's that's the hope.
Has anything already been done towards building it out?
No, nothing specific, it's just an empty space right now. I'm sorry, the inside part, there was some some build out where like counters have been installed, but this was done like a year and a half ago, if not longer, so that might be spruced up and updated, I guess, but it's, but nothing, it's not ready to be opened at this moment, but in a couple, I think four months should be a good timeline for us to be able to open up.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I believe the gentleman has answered everything we need to
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright Commissioners, we're on to deliberations if any.
Well, they've never been issued a temp, they do have a state, which is fine. I'm good.
As am I, they're not operational, so there's nothing to really talk about.
And I don't see any oppositions, Commissioner Melendez, I don't see any opposition or any anybody, any negative feedback on this, so I'm good with the the in a
Okay, hearing nothing from the remaining Commissioners. May I have a motion, please?
Regarding item number seven, DCR Core Record Number three one zero two four five for the business located at eight nine one two hyphen eight nine one four North Reseda Boulevard. I move to adopt, approve the application and adopt staff recommendations as stated in the staff report dated March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item eight is DCR Core Record Number three one zero one five nine. The applicant is Southern California Flower Company LLC to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at three four zero one West Eighth Street. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raised hand.
Thank you, then at this time, we'll hear the department's presentation.
This is Licensing Analyst Megan Blom, I will present item number eight for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. DCR Core Record Number three one zero one five nine is associated with Southern California Flower Company LLC. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at three four zero one West Eighth Street in the Willshire Community Plan Area within Council District ten. A comment was received about a daycare at seven twenty seven Erolo Street, the parcel is residentially zoned, so it doesn't meet the sensitive use definitions. The applicant was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of May first, twenty twenty three. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section one oh four oh six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license number C ten dash zero 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 one three zero three dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales commercial cannabis activity, which is active through May twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one oh four twenty for the Social Equity Program. To comply with equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote and to the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. On or about December twentieth, twenty twenty four, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on January seventeenth, twenty twenty five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. All oral and written testimonies provided by the community members were in favor of the application's approval. Several individuals commented on how the business benefits the neighborhood, welcomes diversity, and educates the community on responsible consumption. A lot of gratitude was expressed for the twenty-four hour security, which has had a positive impact on the safety of the area. A notice to correct was issued and the NTC was closed out. A representative representative from the Compliance and Enforcement Division is in attendance and available to provide more detail should the commission have any questions. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempted. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC one oh four oh four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes Licensing's presentation for this item.
Thank you, Commissioners, any questions for licensing?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez. I just want to go over something, I have, we have a little addendum here to this, for this case. Uh, I'm looking here, it says that the applicant didn't reach out to the neighborhood council, but yet I see sixteen people that actually voted for an issuance of the license now is, uh, so I would, would I be correct in saying that this applicant did reach out to the neighborhood council?
Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. The applicant did provide evidence that they offered to meet with the neighborhood council as required by the code.
Thank you, and then I'm getting over here once again to the sensitive issue, the sensitive use, and it says here's that there's something within seven hundred feet. Can you corroborate the fact that this, uh, Leaf God's Hand Academy is located further than seven hundred feet from, uh, from this intended location?
God's Hand Academy located at seven two seven Erolo Street is not considered a sensitive use because it's located on a residentially zoned property. The definition of daycare excludes any licenses that are issued on a residentially zoned property. So this business could not be considered a sensitive use for the the buffering distances. So the location does comply with the distancing requirements of the municipal code because this is not an actual sensitive use for our purposes.
Great, thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you, any other questions for licensing? Okay, then we'll have Compliance and Enforcement at this time.
Good afternoon, Senior Management Analyst Christina Campos, providing a summary for three four zero one West Eighth Street. We conducted a compliance inspection on November twentieth, twenty twenty four, and a notice to correct was issued on January sixth, twenty twenty five, for a total of seven deficiencies. One being the use of a DBA, minor violation. And the neighborhood liaison contact information was different than what we had on file, minor violation. The employee, I'm sorry, the patron code of conduct was not visibly displayed for the public. Minor violation. The security plan did not include supervising tasks for high potential for diversion, a moderate deficiency. Uh, the delivery receipt did not include all required information. A moderate deficiency in the age verification device was not observed for delivery activity, a moderate deficiency. And the delivery fleet vehicles were not registered with the DCR, another moderate deficiency. They have since submitted all the corrections, and they did receive a a past compliance email, however, after further review, the modification for the DBA was not submitted against the record. So we will be sending out a notification for them to submit that modification. And we did also receive a complaint for this location. On January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, we received an anonymous complaint alleging the operator hosted parties and concerts with the last known event occurring on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. The complaint came in exactly ninety days after the alleged last event. The investigator did go out with the compliance team during the compliance inspection. And due to the fact that the ninety days had passed, they were unable to find video surveillance for the for the event. And they did do a social media search, but at the time, the page was not available. The investigator did speak to the new manager there and did inform them of the regulations and violations of having events and parties. So the complaint was closed out since we didn't have sufficient evidence, but we haven't received any additional complaints since. Any questions?
This is Vice President Nash, you indicated that the complaint was received on January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four?
Yes.
And when was the last event alleged to have occurred?
It was March twenty, March twenty ninth. Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four. So after the complaint was received?
Right. But the complaint was received June twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. It was exactly ninety days after the last alleged event, which was March twenty nine.
I'm I'm confused. The complaint was received in twenty twenty four or twenty twenty?
It was received in twenty twenty four, June twenty seventh of twenty twenty four.
June twenty seven?
Yes, they were alleging the last complaint was the March, yeah, ninety days before.
Got it. When did the department begin its investigation of that complaint?
Um, I don't have the exact date of when we began the investigation. But let me see.
Do you know when the social media was investigated to see if there was any evidence of the event?
I'm not sure when the investigator did, but I also checked, and I checked before they went out on their compliance, which was in November. So prior to them going out November twentieth, I had checked and the pages were were no longer available.
I'm just trying to gauge, you know, how long after the complaint was received did the social media investigation begin? You don't have that information.
No, but I can get that for you.
Any other questions for Compliance? Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll hear from the applicant's representative.
Please state your name and you have ten minutes to address the commission.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm George Zhou, I'm a representative for Southern California Flower Company. And at first, I'd like to thank all of you guys for your time and this opportunity.
Are you representative for the applicant?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we're a small, local dispensary located in Koreatown, Los Angeles, and we've been operating since June twenty twenty three, and today I'm reaching out to respectfully request your support in approving our annual license. We are committed to become, uh, being a responsible business, and we've taken significant steps to ensure safety, compliance, and to be a positive impact on the neighborhood. The strong support that we received at the public comment hearing on January seventeenth speaks volumes about our role in the community. You know, we organize Christmas toy drives, we distribute Thanksgiving turkeys, and we don't post any of this on social media, we just, we just do it. Additionally, we prioritize security in our neighborhood and safety. We maintain twenty-four hour security, uh, which do wonders in deterring crime and vandalism in the area, especially at night. Uh, and many local residents have actually expressed that they feel safer in the area with this security presence. Um, and I just wanted to address a point that was made earlier about our social media. We don't try to hide anything, we're all about transparency. We ourselves did not delete the social media account. It was actually shut down by Meta, who has very strong, you know, regulations on cannabis and and whatnot. You know, just an example of this transparency, when the DCR team came out to us to investigate the events and then the annual compliance, we immediately pulled up the camera footage for them, we don't want to hide anything from you guys, we're not in that business. Uh, speaking about the inspection, we did receive a notice to correct from the Department of Cannabis Regulation, but we promptly addressed this, ensuring full compliance. Since then, we've implemented proper procedures to maintain adherence to every, all the regulations. And given our dedication to the community, our commitment to safety, and our proactive approach to compliance, we respectfully ask for your approval of our annual license. We remain dedicated to operating responsibly and to continue to be a positive presence in the neighborhood. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for being here. And for your presentation, I do appreciate your presence. Question for you, the events that are referenced as part of the complaint, can you describe what actually went on?
Yeah, so what actually happened is essentially, we wanted to have like a deal day where, you know, these brands could come in and showcase their brand, their history, what they're about. Uh, and essentially, we just had a couple of tents, or they brought their own tents. No live product was out there, I just want to make sure that that's clear. You know, all sales were happening inside the licensed store, and they were just showcasing, you know, the brand, their history, and sort of what what they're about, so it was, it was really more like a a museum, if you, if you could call it that.
Okay, that's a stretch, but okay, thank you.
This is Vice President Nash, was there music at this particular event that you just described?
Uh, so that was actually one of the, uh, the, when the DCR came in, we had speakers on the outside. We actually realized we couldn't have that. Immediately when they came in, said you can't have that, we took it down within the hour. So, uh, the music was outside of our store because of the speakers outside of the store, we took that down, that's not an issue anymore.
I'm going to re-ask the question though, was there music at this particular event that you described? Amplified outdoor music?
Uh, not to my knowledge, no.
I I appreciate your honesty, and then, and I'll let you know that we have approved applicants that have had events. When they've indicated, when they've been truthful about it, and when they've been remorseful, and that's on a case by case basis. And we've denied applications on people that were less than truthful. So with that in mind, approximately, how many events did you hold there?
To my knowledge, there was one, the grand opening event, that was back in twenty twenty three. Uh, and then there was, I believe, another one. Yeah, around the June, sort of like the anniversary one. We had two, I believe, two.
Uh, so that would be your best answer to today that there were two events that occurred?
Sorry, it's, it's been a long two years, let me, let me think here. Two to three is my answer.
Now, you described one event. What about the second one, or what was that?
Uh, so the first one I described was the the most recent one that occurred. The first one that occurred, the anniversary, that one, there, there was amplified music, but since then, we've realized, you know, that's, that's obviously wrong. That was within like two, three weeks of us opening, uh, so mistakes were going to be made, but since then, you know, that was over a year and a half ago, we, we're not going to do anything like that, we haven't done anything like that, and uh, we're not going to do anything like that in the future. Uh, in fact, you know, uh, we take these concerns pretty seriously. The general manager who is responsible for these events is actually no longer with the company. You know, unilateral decisions, we believe, is what sort of occurred, these mistakes and these slip ups to happen, so we've moved to a more horizontally like, uh, do you know what I'm talking about, like, uh, more horizontally powerful? Where like different managers have like equal different managers have like equal power and like distribution of power. So now, you know, we're able to sort of cross-reference, check, shoot each other down like, hey, this isn't right. So we're we're here to essentially make sure that no violations ever occur again.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I I do count three events, including the brand day, the grand opening and anniversary event, and you have described to us as what I take to be a pre-event review plan, where you guys sit down and discuss the parameters involved.
Uh, no, we're we're not doing any events again.
Okay, nothing?
No.
Okay. I accept that. Thank you. Commissioner Melendez, any questions?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I have no further questions. Vice President Nash?
Uh, this, I have no other questions. This, I believe, also has the tax issue that we've been discussing on the other matters.
I don't believe we have any tax delinquencies.
Okay, it's in the report. Maybe we should reopen the department.
At your request, absolutely. Give us a moment, please. We're gonna close out your presentation. And don't move. And we're returning to the department and reopening licensing's report? For questions?
The data included in the report was based on the Office of Finance's report from December of twenty twenty four about the statuses of our cannabis operators, because it's part of the items that we look at when we consider a renewal application. So to the extent that the operator has come back into good standing, I would have to reach out to finance to verify that, but they may in fact have come back into good standing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Closing out the department, closing out licensing and returning to the applicant's presentation?
Um, I'm sorry.
The question had to do with delinquent taxes regarding this dispensary. Are you able to present anything to us today which would confirm that you're in good standing?
Would you mind giving me a second to meet with my colleague?
I'll allow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I have a tax confirmation right here for January twenty twenty four. Do you mind if I show this to you? Twenty twenty five, sorry.
City attorney, who should receive that?
I know. I'm sorry, we didn't have this document verified prior to this hearing, and so I'm reluctant to allow it to be presented now without being able to independently verify that. I do believe, I'm sorry, Mr. Colleen, do you have access to, would you be able to verify as to whether or not they are currently in good standing?
Jason Colleen, Assistant Executive Director, I could verify it.
Well, not by verifying that, is, do you have independent information from the Office of Finance as to their tax standing today?
I need like three or four minutes and I can independently verify it.
Okay. So I am closing the applicant's presentation. Commissioner Nash has requested that we reopen licensing, and then I'll address whether or not we should table.
That sounds like the right course of action.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And by tabling, that means that we will still make a decision today. We'll just have to circle back to you on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Melendez, Jason. So what you were saying earlier about the report from the Office of Finance, you say that the, everything that was in front of us today has a date of when it was submitted and when the cutoff day was for these reports. Can you, can you state those dates again for me?
So the report we had received from the Office of Finance was dated at the beginning of December of twenty twenty four. And that report was to inform how DCR processed the renewal applications. Because folks that are not in good standing with the Office of Finance, that is grounds to deny a renewal application. When we got that list, we were troubled by the number of businesses that were delinquent. Therefore, we reached out to the mayor and city council, and we were requested not to deny a renewal application for that reason for calendar year twenty twenty five, to give the policymakers an opportunity to systematically review that and potentially address it on a go-forward basis. Based on the the information that I have, Southern California Collective, a California corporation, does still have some kind of outstanding tax with the Office of Finance. The Office of Finance can provide evidence that the businesses come into good standing. If the business is entered into a repayment plan, they'll still show as having an outstanding tax balance, but for the purposes of DCR's process, if you have a repayment plan, it would be considered to be, for that business to be in good standing. I do not have access to those records. So based on what I have access to now, I do show that the business does have outstanding tax obligations.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We are going to close the department's presentation and return to the applicant's presentation at this time. If there are any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I I just had one question. You mentioned Southern California Collective. That I don't believe that is the name of our LLC or legal business name.
That is correct. You guys are Southern California Flower Company LLC. And thank you for your patience.
No worries. Thank you.
President Mason, do you mind if we table the matter so that I can do a little bit more due diligence to determine whether or not we are able to independently verify the status and the information that the department has on hand to ensure that we're speaking correctly here today?
Absolutely. Any issue in the interest of fairness and correct procedure, I will allow this matter to be tabled. It can be the first item after we return from our break.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, so this matter is now, item number eight is tabled. It will be the first item we hear after we return from our recess. We're moving on to, why am I off here? Item ten, which is DCR Core Record Number three two zero zero eight nine. The applicant is Nwora K. Okafor to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at two one four one zero West Nordhoff Street. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raised hand in the virtual meeting.
Thank you. Then at this time, we will hear from department staff.
This is licensing analyst Megan Blom, and I will present item number ten for DCR. DCR Core Record Number three two zero zero eight nine is associated with Nwora K. Okafor. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at two one four one zero West Nordhoff Street in the Chatsworth Porter Ranch Community Plan area within Council District Three. The applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section one oh four oh six, but is currently non-operational. The applicant is subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one oh four twenty for the Social Equity Program. To comply with this equity share requirements, SEIAs must possess possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote and to the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, DCR reviewed the ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. On or about January seventeenth, twenty twenty five, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on February thirteenth, twenty twenty five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. DCR did not receive oral or written testimony for this applicant. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to SECA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one oh four oh four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for this item.
Thank you, Ms. Blum. Commissioners, any questions for the department? Okay, hearing none, then we do have someone here on behalf of the applicant. You may approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have ten minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Reza Sadafi. I'm the designated representative for Mr. Okafor. We just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to have a retail cannabis location in the Chatsworth area. It's really focused on closer, okay, sorry. We're focusing on public safety, transparency, being, following all guidelines with the city and the state, offering livable wages for all of our team members, and just hopefully being a a positive impact on the community, and just wanted to come by and see if there's any questions or concerns, and so I can address them.
Thank you for being here. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Representative of the applicant, rather. Commissioner Melendez?
No, they have no no issued temporary permit. There's really not much to go on.
No, there isn't.
We're not, oh, yeah, we're not open. This is just, you know, we have our lease, we did the construction, we've posted all the signs that we needed to, we had our DCR inspection, we passed with that. And this is the next step in the licensing phase for us.
Understood. Okay. I have no questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for the consideration.
We are open for deliberations, if any.
But the good thing is, is no outstanding tax. So I'm I'm good.
Yes, they are not part of the seven hundred. I agree with Commissioner Melendez.
I've got no problems with them.
Okay, then is there a motion?
Regarding item number ten, DCR Core Record Number three two zero zero eight nine for the business located at two one four one zero West Nordhoff Street, I move to adopt staff recommendations as stated in the staff report dated March twenty six, two thousand twenty five.
This is Commissioner Melendez. I second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizel. Please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. The time is three thirty-two PM. We're gonna go ahead and recess at this time, and we will reconvene at four o'clock PM.
We may resume.
Thank you. The time is four thirteen P M and the commission is reconvening. We will be returning now to item number eight. D C R core record number three one zero one five nine, opening up the department's presentation at this time.
Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. I have been in contact with the Office of Finance and they have confirmed that the applicant has come back into good standing and they are current through December twenty twenty five, which was the tax reporting period that we had identified within our report. So Southern California Flower Company LLC is in good standing with the Office of Finance at this point. And I would like to orally amend D C R's report to strike out the section that was highlighted that indicated that they were not in good standing because they have returned to good standing.
Thank you so much for confirming. Reopening the applicant's presentation if there are any other questions for the applicant. Okay, then we're good to go on into deliberations. Commissioner Vice President Nash.
This is Vice President Nash. Before we begin deliberations, I wanted to mention on the record that I've received, to my knowledge, three emails regarding item number eight, one of which I read in its entirety. It was urging the proposition that the location that they're claiming to be a sensitive use is in fact a school. I just want to put it on the record that I'm not considering anything that I receive in the email.
Thank you. Any deliberations on this item commissioners?
So, uh, this is Commissioner Melendez. So what are you saying Commissioner Nash? You're saying that there is a sensitive use that's conflicting with this? Are they saying there's none?
No, I was saying that we've received submissions indicating that there's a sensitive use. And from the department's perspective, they indicated that it actually was not a sensitive use.
Because it's in a residential track.
Correct.
Yes. And you know, from what I'm looking at, they've had their temporary issued since May of twenty twenty three. Looks like they've been up with all their notices to comply. Everything looks good. You know, the only, I'm glad we were able to get to the, to the point where we know they're in good standing because it seems like the report from the Office of Finance, which was basically December first of twenty twenty four, you know, it's kind of five months in, you know, we're, we're running into a lot of cases that are having issues. So I'm glad we were able to resolve this. So I'm actually good. I think, I think we touched on all the situations that might have been sensitive about the about the events that were posted there. And I think that's something that compliance has to take a look at, but I don't necessarily think that that's something that I really going to sway me one way or the other.
This is Vice President Nash. I agree with that. And I am glad that it appears that the applicant was open and honest about the events. And I would just put on
We may resume.
Thank you. The time is four thirteen P M and the commission is reconvening. We will be returning now to item number eight. D C R core record number three one zero one five nine, opening up the department's presentation at this time.
Jason Clean, Assistant Executive Director. I have been in contact with the Office of Finance and they have confirmed that the applicant has come back into good standing and they are current through December twenty twenty five, which was the tax reporting period that we had identified within our report. So Southern California Flower Company LLC is in good standing with the Office of Finance at this point. And I would like to orally amend D C R's report to strike out the section that was highlighted that indicated that they were not in good standing because they have returned to good standing.
Thank you so much for confirming. Reopening the applicant's presentation. If there are any other questions for the applicant? Okay, then we're good to go on into deliberations. Commissioner Vice President Nash.
This is Vice President Nash. Before we begin deliberations, I wanted to mention on the record that I've received, to my knowledge, three emails regarding item number eight, one of which I read in its entirety. It was urging the proposition that the location that they're claiming to be a sensitive use is in fact a school. I just want to put it on the record that I'm not considering anything that I receive in the email.
Thank you. Any deliberations on this item, commissioners?
So this is Commissioner Melendez. So what are you saying, Commissioner Nash? You're saying that there is a sensitive use that's conflicting with this? Are they saying there's none?
No, I was saying that we've received submissions indicating that there's a sensitive use. And from the department's perspective, they indicated that it actually was not.
No, because it's in the residential, correct? Because it's in the residential track.
Correct.
Yes. And you know, from what I'm looking at, they've had their temporary issued since May of twenty twenty three. Looks like they've been up with all their notices to comply. Everything looks good. You know, the only, I'm glad we're able to get to the to the point where we know they're in good standing because it seems like the report from the Office of Finance, which was basically December first of twenty twenty four. You know, it's kind of five months in, you know, we're, we're running into a lot of cases that are having issues. So I'm glad we were able to resolve this. So I'm actually good. I think, I think we touched on all the situations that might have been sensitive about the about the events that were posted there. And I think that's something that compliance has to take a look at, but I don't necessarily think that that's something that I really, going to sway me one way or the other.
This is Vice President Nash. I agree with that and I am glad that it appears that the applicant was open and honest about the events. And I would just put on the record that in the event that the department would determine at a later event that they weren't, that that would be a cause for taking away the license. So.
Well, for fine, at least.
This is President Mason. The department was at a handicap at the time that the complaint was received because it was three months following the last event. So there was plenty of time to clean up their act in ninety days. And really, the department wasn't going to find anything most likely with a three month old complaint, really. Instead of something that was more timely suggestion to the community listening, if you are going to file a complaint with the department about an event, please don't wait until ninety days later. Make it a little bit more timely, like within twenty four to forty eight hours of the event. But otherwise, I, I have no comments. You guys have pretty much covered everything and I'm comfortable with going forward. So do we have a motion?
Regarding item number, this is Vice President Nash. Regarding item number eight, D C R core record number three one zero one five nine for the business located at three four zero one West Eighth Street. I move to adopt staff recommendations as recommended in their staff report dated March twenty six, two thousand twenty five and as orally amended at this proceeding.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you, Mr. Vizel. Please call the roll.
Vice President Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez.
Aye.
President Mason.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We're on to item twelve, D C R core record number three two zero zero nine one. The applicant is Virgil F G L L C to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight zero one North Virgil Avenue. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raised hand in the virtual meeting.
Thank you. Then at this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Good afternoon. This is licensing analyst Megan Blom. I will present item number twelve for the Department of Cannabis Regulation. D C R core record number three two zero zero nine one is associated with Virgil F G L L C. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eight zero one North Virgil Avenue in the Hollywood Community Plan area within Council District thirteen. The applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with L A M C section one oh four six, but is currently non-operational. The applicant does not currently possess a state provisional license to conduct retail with onsite sales, commercial cannabis activity. The applicant is subject to the requirements of L A M C section one oh four twenty for the social equity program. To comply with equity share requirements, S C I As must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote and to the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, D C R reviewed the ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. On or about February nineteenth, twenty twenty five, D C R provided notice of the community meeting and cannabis regulation commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. D C R held a virtual community meeting on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. D C R also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. There were two oral comments and one written comment provided by the public expressing concerns about increased crime, loitering, traffic, and cleanliness. A representative from the business expressed the positive value the business will be bringing to the community by, by keeping the area safe and clean, along with twenty four hour security and plans to beautify the corner. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons D C R or the commission may deny a license. At present, D C R is not aware of any existing facts nor circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in L A M C section one oh four oh four. Therefore, D C R recommends that the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license, which concludes the department's presentation for item number twelve.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions for department staff? Hearing none, we will receive the applicant's presentation. We do have someone here, Alex Leon.
Good evening, committee, commission. My name is Alex Leon. I'm here today to speak on item twelve, core record three two zero zero nine one. Today, we're seeking your approval for annual license. Currently managing partner and operator at Virgil LLC eight oh one North Virgil. We're not operating. However, we are working towards opening after construction is completed. In the meantime, and to provide a little bit of background, we've made some, some efforts to operate all of our licenses, social equity licenses. We have a few other dispensaries as well as cultivation. So we're vertically integrated. And we operate these licenses with compliant, in a compliant manner, and also integrate ourselves within our community. As mentioned, we've earned the support of East Hollywood Neighborhood Council, and they have issued a letter of support in regards to us obtaining an annual license. We plan to make a conscious effort and not just to take, but also to give back to Virgil Village Community in the same manner we have done with our other retail locations. As an example, as mentioned earlier too, at one of our other operating locations, when the corner was plagued with crime issues, and since then, we've added twenty four hour security and look at to that location and have maintained a safe place for the customers as well as the residents who live in that community. In addition, my partners also own businesses. Jafar is here in Los Angeles, including Brick House Boxing Club in North Hollywood, which has been a premier boxing gym in the city and an integral business for our community. Overall, our approach is to run a clean operation while connecting with the communities that we operate in. In closing, I'd like to say we appreciate your opportunity to stand before you and hope that we get your approval for our annual license.
Thank you for being here.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
This is Commissioner Melendez. Where is your parking? Is it just street parking?
No, sir. It is going to be in the back of our location.
And how many spots would you have?
I believe right now it's planned for four.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We're on to deliberations, if any. I don't have anything.
No temp.
They're not open, so there's.
Much to go on.
Yeah.
Not much going on. I don't see any complaints or anybody, I don't see anything in front of me that would, is Commissioner Melendez that, that is in opposition to this?
I did want to applaud you on getting approval from, or a letter of support from East Hollywood Neighborhood Council because with a couple of past applications, they've gone really hard and been really tough. So if you pass muster with them, who are we? Who are we to say no?
Oh, no. I think it's just really about being proactive and wanting to extend.
President Mason, do you want him to step up?
Approach the mic.
Sorry, my apologies. It's just a matter of just.
Will you reopen?
You can reopen his time.
Oh, sorry. It's just a matter of just reaching out to them in a timely manner and giving them an opportunity to open dialogue and to understand what our efforts are planning to be. And.
Excuse me, sir. Could you state your name one more time?
Sure. My name is Alex Leon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that's, it was actually relatively a smooth procedure. Yes.
Thank you for that. I'm reopening commissioner deliberations at this time. Nothing else, then I'll hear a motion.
Regarding item number, or this is Vice President Nash. Regarding item number twelve, D C R core record number three two zero zero nine one for the business located at eight oh one North Virgil Avenue, I move to approve the application and adopt staff recommendations as stated in their staff report dated March twenty six, two thousand twenty five.
Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Thank you. Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez.
Aye.
President Mason.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We are on to item fifteen, D C R core record number three one zero one three four. You're welcome. The applicant is Three Donkeys Incorporated to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at three three two four Northeastern Avenue. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raised hand in the virtual meeting.
Thank you. Then at this time, we'll hear from department staff.
Thank you. This is licensing analyst Megan Blom. I will present item number fifteen for the department. D C R core record number three one zero one three four is associated with Three Donkeys Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at three three two four Northeastern Avenue in northeast Los Angeles Community Plan area within Council District fourteen. The department would like to orally amend page three of the report at the end of the compliance review section and strike the statement that the applicant is delinquent on its business taxes. The Office of Finance has since notified the department that the applicant has come back into good standing as of December of twenty twenty four. The applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with L A M C section one oh four oh six, but is currently non-operational. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, C ten dash zero 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 one three 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 dash L I C to conduct retail with onsite sales, commercial cannabis activity, which is active through June twenty first, twenty twenty five. The applicant is subject to the requirements of L A M C section one oh four twenty for the social equity program. To comply with equity share requirements, S C I As must possess unrestricted ownership of their share of the social equity applicant business, a proportional right to vote into the profits, and include code mandated language. As part of the application process, D C R reviewed the corporate and ownership documentation provided for this applicant and determined that the applicant met the minimum equity share requirements at that time. On or about February nineteenth, twenty twenty five, D C R provided notice of the community meeting and cannabis regulation commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. D C R held a virtual community meeting on March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. D C R also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. In general, the oral and written comments provided by the public were against the application due to its proximity to a church and safety concerns regarding the children that play there and the potential increase in vehicle traffic. This church, the department has looked into this church, which is on a residentially zoned parcel and property and does not meet the standards of the definition of sensitive use. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class one and class thirty two categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons D C R or the commission may deny a license. At present, D C R is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in L A M C section one oh four oh four. Therefore, D C R recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. That concludes the department's presentation for item fifteen.
Thank you, commissioners. Any questions for department staff?
This is Commissioner Melendez. Jason, if, if they have a temporary operating permit from the state of California, would they still have to be in compliance within state's guidelines of the distance between the, the address that they're proposing and any sensitive use?
Yeah, the state does their own review based on their guidelines. As it relates to the correspondence for this item we received, religious institutions and places of worship are not considered a sensitive use based on our land use and sensitive use definitions. Therefore, this would not be considered a sensitive use and because there's no daycare license or school license, you know, it would be unlikely the state would even consider it a sensitive use for their purposes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions for department? Okay. I don't have a speaker card for the applicant. Mr. Vizel, is there anyone in the queue?
There is a raised hand. Caller with phone number ending in zero four four zero. Please state your name and how you represent the applicant. You have ten minutes to address the commission.
Hi, I'm sorry. This is Lisa Sealan. How are you guys tonight? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Hello, Lisa.
Hi. Hi, everybody. Glad to see you're all back. Everybody's doing well. Yes, I represent this business. They are not operational. The ownership changed a little bit last year, and that was one of the things that was going on that prevented the ownership from moving forward with the buildout, but they currently do have permits and plans that they're submitting through L A D B S for just doing some tenant improvements, but they want to make sure they're doing everything to code. So their goal is to definitely try to get open and operating within the next four to six months at the latest. But there is one concern of this particular owner, and that is that we have discovered that located within seven hundred feet of this location, the D C R has approved a, another retail dispensary located at four eight eight four East Huntington. And that is record number L A dash S dash two four dash three two zero zero four four. And it's quite concerning because I'm wondering what kind of land use procedure the D C R is using because it's within five hundred feet of this particular business. And I, you know, they're not open and operating. They don't have a state license at all. They're just in the process, I guess, of going through the L A D C R. But I'm, that's my question to the commission is how can we make sure that when we're putting businesses in operation that within a period of time after they've been given local approval, state licenses and everything, that another retail does not come within seven hundred feet, which is a sensitive use? And that's what I'm posing. Other than that, this business will be operated by someone who already has been operating two other businesses. And they're very good operators in the state of California and the city of Los Angeles. They've never had issues. I just wanted to bring that to the commission's attention.
Thank you, Lisa. Any questions for her before I reopen to the department? Okay, I'm going to close out the applicant's presentation and reopen the department's presentation regarding her comments.
Regarding her comments about another record number and related to what's before you today.
Yeah.
When a business submits the pre-application review record, we're looking at the information at that point in time, and if two pre-apps are submitted, neither of them plants a flag. So the Three Donkeys location has planted its flag. It does knock out the phase three retail round two applicant who just submitted a record earlier this year. So that record will not be eligible to move forward because it will no longer comply with the requirements. The sensitive use determinations are locked in, but application records are fluid. And when an application has been submitted and fees are paid or a license is issued, that's when that record plants the flag. So the, the record that she mentioned has not planted a flag and it will not be eligible to move forward. And the applicant will be made aware of it and, you know, ultimately the record will be closed out.
Okay. Thank you so much. Closing out the department's presentation and returning to the applicant's presentation. Lisa, if you have anything else, if not, we'll move right along.
No, and thank you so much, Jason. I really appreciate that clarification. That was the only thing that was concerning to this applicant, that they were going to be going through this expensive buildout and then find out that around the corner, there's another business. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I have nothing more to say.
Gosh, I don't get a thank you for asking, Jason. Moving on to deliberations, if any.
Commissioner Melendez, well, there's no temp, so there's really nothing to go on. There was nine negative comments, but I mean, obviously they're based on the church and the proximity of the church from what I'm reading. And then, and if the state already issued them a temporary, which means that they comply with what the state's looking for then. And D C R, they're.
And DCR, their, their due diligence and their recommending them, I'm good.
Thank you. To your point, I do believe the state's sensitive use distancing is a bit more liberal than ours is. Isn't there six hundred feet?
Six, correct.
Yeah, the attorney Allison told, correct, six hundred feet.
All right. Anything, Vice President Nash?
Nothing for me.
Do we have a motion on the report as amended?
Regarding item number fifteen, DCR Core Record Number three one zero one three four, for the business located at three three two four Northeastern Avenue, I move to adopt staff recommendations as stated in their staff report dated March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and as orally amended in this proceeding.
This is Commissioner Melendez. I second it.
Thank you. Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item sixteen is DCR Core Record Number one zero zero three five. The applicant is Los Angeles Farmers Incorporated to approve an annual license for storefront retail commercial cannabis activity located at eight two four East Seventeenth Street. Mr. Vizel, are there any neighborhood council or elected office representatives on this item?
No, we do not have a speaker card or a raised hand.
Then at this time, we will hear from department staff. Thank you. Thank you, licensing.
President Mason, just.
I sent an email saying that I'm.
I'm sorry. Um, Irene? We'll go ahead.
Uh, this is licensing analyst Megan Blom. I will present item number sixteen for the department. DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 three five is associated with Los Angeles Farmers, Inc. The applicant seeks an annual license for the type-ten retail commercial cannabis activity. The business is located at eight two forty-seventeenth Street in the southeast Los Angeles Community Plan Area within Council District fourteen. The department would like to orally amend page three of the report at the end of the compliance review section and strike the statement that the applicant is delinquent on its business taxes. The Office of Finance has since notified the department that the applicant has come back into good standing as of December of two thousand twenty-four. The applicant, uh, was issued temporary approval by DCR with an effective date of July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty. Since that time, the applicant has completed all requirements for the issuance of an annual license in accordance with LAMC Section one oh four oh six. The applicant currently possesses a state provisional license, number C ten dash zero 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 three nine one dash LIC to conduct retail with onsite sales, which is active through July eighth, two thousand twenty-five. The applicant is not subject to the requirements of LAMC Section one oh four twenty for the social equity program. On or about February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, DCR provided notice of the community meeting and Cannabis Regulation Commission meeting by mail to the owners and occupants of all property within seven hundred feet of the property line of the business premises. Notice was provided in accordance with the municipal code. DCR held a virtual community meeting on March eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. During the meeting, members of the public were afforded two minutes each to speak about the application. DCR also accepted online written input through the date of the community meeting. There were two oral comments and a written comment provided by the public expressing concerns about increased crime, loitering, traffic, cleanliness. A representative from the business did express positive value of the business will be bringing to the, um, community. Based on the department's analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the criteria for a class-one and class-thirty-two categorical exemption pursuant to secret guidelines. Since the project meets all of the requirements and none of the applicable exceptions apply, it is appropriate to determine this project is categorically exempt. The staff report lists a number of reasons DCR or the commission may deny a license. At present, DCR is not aware of any existing facts or circumstances to deny this annual license for the reasons in LAMC Section one oh four oh four. Therefore, DCR recommends the commission adopt the recommendations included in the staff report and approve the issuance of this annual license. Uh, that concludes the department's, um, presentation for this item.
Thank you, Megan. Uh, the commissioners, any questions for the department?
Actually, sorry, this is licensing analyst Megan Blom. I would like to orally amend that DCR actually did not receive any, um, community input for this applicant. Um, that was incorrect. And the report is clear, the report is correct, that was submitted to the commission, that there were no positive or negative comments provided by community members for this applicant.
Thank you. At this time, we will receive the applicant's presentation if there are no questions for the department.
Hi, my name is Anai, and I am representing the applicant.
May we have your last name, please?
Anaitheas.
Thank you. You'll have ten minutes.
So I am responsible for navigating the receivership between, um, multiple lawyers and DCR. So this is currently under receivership. We're navigating through the annual licensing process, um, you know, will eventually be doing entity substitution. It's currently non-operational. We did a presentation with the neighborhood council as well as the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, and then finished it with the Board of Directors, um, hearing. And they did provide a letter of support. I don't know if that was sent directly to you guys. Did you receive that? Because I got it. I could send it later, but the neighborhood council has supported the project, and they just requested us to add some additional exterior lights. Um, there's a street along the freeway that is just covered in RVs. Um, so we added some additional lighting to deter the unhoused population. But it's in a, um, it's right along the freeway. Um, it's an interesting spot for retail, um, but it's, it's mostly operating as a cultivation facility at the moment. And that's it.
Okay, thank you for being here. Don't move. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, this is Commissioner Melendez. So I'm looking at this location and I see it has a fence, a parking lot, and it's a pretty good-sized building. So you do cultivation inside that building?
Correct. It's approved for four uses.
And you're gonna be putting a, you're, you're requesting a type-ten for that location as well?
Um, it's actually, it has a, a retail license, uh, at the state level, provisional.
So, so that's what you're here for, you're for the, the type-ten, correct? And what size is the actual, uh, store gonna be?
So, okay, originally, it was, it was called, um, Show Grow, and then it went to Jungle Boys. It's a very, very large, um, retail, um, floor plan. It's excessively large. Um, right now, they have no intention of changing it. It's at least like twelve hundred square feet. Um, it's an unnecessary use of space. So at the moment, it has been untouched. The premise diagram hasn't been modified at all. They just added additional cameras. But there's about, I'm estimating at least twelve hundred square feet of retail, maybe up to sixteen. Adjust the floor space.
That's pretty big. Yes, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you for being here.
Okay.
We're open for deliberations, if any.
I could sit down?
Yes, so, I mean, it looks like they had a temporary approved of July twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty. And of course, they're going through receivership, which means they're going through a change of hands. I don't see anything in, or anything in front of me that's negative. So this is Commissioner Melendez, and, uh, so I'm, I'm good.
Nothing for me?
Nothing for me, so let's go for the motion.
Regarding item number sixteen, DCR Core Record Number one zero 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 three five, for the business located at eight two four East Seventeenth Street, I move to adopt staff recommendations as stated in their staff report dated March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, as orally amended.
This is Commissioner Melendez, I second.
Mr. Vizel, please call the roll.
Vice President Nash?
Aye.
Commissioner Melendez?
Aye.
President Mason?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. And today, I just want to touch on us losing a member of the commission family. Commissioner Lem had to resign. I wanted to publicly thank the commissioner for leaning into this work and taking it as seriously as he did. I told him personally that his thorough, thorough investigation of each application was second to none. We will miss his presence on this commission, and, um, we look forward to who comes next. But whoever it is, you're filling some pretty big shoes. Having said that, thank you to the commissioners for being here today. Thank you to the department for your support. The time is four forty-eight, and we are.